When you are ready. All right. Thank you, Krista. Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the joint study session with the Covington Economic Development Council and the Covington Chamber of Commerce Board. This city council special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And instead of calling roll call, I will just go around the my screen and have everybody introduce themselves. So I'm going to start with Josh.
Hi, everybody. Josh Lyons here, CEDIS co-chair. And happy to be able to provide you guys with an update tonight.
Thanks, Josh. Kalen.
Hi, I'm Kalen Provatsky, CEDIS co-chair as well, and thank you for the opportunity to share what we got going on with CEDIS. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kalen. Kevin.
Hi, I'm glad to be on the Economic Development Committee. I'm a business advisor with Green River and I represent the Chamber on CEDIS.
Welcome, Kevin. George.
Good evening. I'm George Frazier, and I'm a Chamber Board member and also the Vice President for College Advancement at Green River College.
Welcome, George. Scott.
Hey, Scott Beish, representing CEDIS and the Chamber Board as well. Edward Jones in Covington.
Welcome, Scott. Cass.
Hi, I'm Kathleen. Sorry, I have a grumpy baby with me.
Welcome, Cass. Krista, see Laura Roth. I believe she's on CEDIS in the audience. And I'm not sure if Justin, but let's go to Lori Paxton.
Hi, I'm Lori Paxton. I am a Chamber Board member and also the Director of Current Technical Education for the Kent School District.
Welcome, Lori.
Thanks.
Laura Roth. We're just doing introductions.
Hi, I'm Laura Roth, and I sit on the city side of CEDIS.
Welcome, Laura. Rod. Rod, we're just doing introductions. Are you there? All right, I see Mark Smith is in the audience. I'll go to Council. Joe.
I'm Joe Simomo. I'm on the council. Thanks for being here tonight, everyone.
Don.
Hi, I'm Sean Smith. I'm on the council as well.
Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hardjowden. I'm a council member as well.
Christina.
Hello, Christina Saltis. I'm on the council. It's nice to see everyone.
Beth.
Beth Porter, Council Member.
Mark, we're doing introductions.
Good evening, Mark Smith, President for Covington Medical Center and Auburn Medical Center for MultiCare.
Welcome. And Rod, did you get your audio working? All right, Regan.
Evening, everyone. Regan Bolley, Covington City Manager.
And I am Jeff Wagner. I am your Mayor of Covington. I want to thank each of you for joining us tonight and taking time out of your night to be here. I always look forward to our joint sessions with the Chamber Board and the Economic Development Council. Council Economic Council's been around since two thousand twelve, I believe. Actually, longer, excuse me, longer than that, two thousand two. So I really appreciate you all being here, and I look forward to hearing your updates. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and Kalen, whoever's going to give us the updates to CEDIS. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to take the first couple of agenda items, not necessarily in the order on the agenda itself. So I'm going to start with Project X Factor. So this is something that was presented to council last year in a very vague form. It's it was it was kind of the birth child of the of CEDIS and the Arts Commission, where Merida and I got together after one of the chamber updates or, excuse me, one of the board updates. And felt like there was a lot of synergy between the Arts Commission and what CEDIS had been imagining its role in helping kind of push the economic activity of Covington. So she and I came up with the concept that we felt like Covington needed an X factor. And what I mean by that is that factor in which when people, two people come together that don't necessarily know each other and say, one says they're from Kent, the other says they're from Covington, the person from Kent goes, oh, Covington, that's where X, right? So it's that it's that factor that people, hopefully that positive factor, not a negative factor, that positive factor where people naturally have a sense of what Covington is, what it's about, et cetera, et cetera. So that really morphed into our idea of of thinking about what could Covington's X factor be? And how could CEDIS and the Arts Commission and anybody else that was interested work together to kind of push that initiative? And we've intuitively been finding our way to this spot already. The 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 concept of a of an ambassador in the form of karma really came out of CEDIS feeling its way in the dark on this and trying to figure out some things that can really drive maybe a community personality, if you will. So karma came out of out of that process. But really, our idea is that not only would an X factor that I've described to be a benefit, it really is an effort, especially as we face a new entity in the form of maybe a competing downtown sector, if you will, with Lake Point. We have an idea that we really need to work to establish a plan for the original downtown core to avoid perhaps it becoming kind of a secondary place where businesses move out away from that core. You see a natural degradation of the properties in the core and subsequently a natural degradation of quality of life, if you will. So how do we interrupt that natural life cycle that that could occur? What can we basically add to to our, I guess, our our community personality that would that would create regeneration? So last year, some of you that were around or or here for this presentation, we talked about different examples of communities that have done this. They've done it such as, for example, I use the example of Leavenworth, where Leavenworth was a dying community, and that community came together to create a a personality that's regenerative, that continually adds to the community in a way that it rebuilds itself over and over again. That's one example. Sometimes these things that we talk that are in this kind of frame are maybe parks or event centers, or perhaps it's a combination of all those things. Sometimes it's just a a personality. Keep Austin Weird, for example, is something that people talk about. And then, and and I've been there, and it certainly is weird. So they live up to their reputation, but, you know, in many ways, in a good way. People are like, I want to go to Austin to see how weird those people really are. So so that was something that was presented last year. And what came of that, in many ways, is we were kicking around the idea of Covington. What can Covington do to claim it's the best at something? What is, what can we be the best at? That we can confidently say we are the 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 best in the in the in the Puget Sound, in the state of Washington, in the nation. And we started thinking about one thing that, a couple of things that we have complete control over is the cleanliness of our city. We also have complete control over the safety of our city. And initially, we were talking about a factor of it being interesting. That's since been supplanted by most welcoming. And that really has, that is what I'm referring to is something that Justin Van Lanchi has really picked up and taken off with, which is the Clean, Safe, Most Welcoming City Committee, in which CEDIS has agreed to take on the most welcoming piece and really champion that piece as kind of the start, the kickoff. I don't know if the clean, safe, most welcoming city in America is necessarily the end all be all, but it sure would be a great place to start. And if we could confidently claim to be the cleanest, safest, most welcoming city in, name the the geographic area, whether it's the state of Washington or the nation or what, I think we're we're well on our way to something really special. So, you know, I think there, hopefully, people are seeing a direct connection between this concept and economic vibrancy and growth. If we can, if we can confidently claim those things, quality businesses will follow, and I think that that will have a regenerative kind of component to it. So that's that's the clean, that's the the update on Project X Factor, where it's going and what's happened. I I have to give a lot of credit to Justin on this because he's really taken it, led the charge, and he's also living it with Covington Place. He's presenting the community with an example of how businesses can behave and how it can lead to quality initiatives. So Justin, I know you're on here somewhere. Good job there because we couldn't have, you know, gotten this far without your efforts on that. So I think before there's, so I've covered two of the agenda items within that. I'd like to give, I'm really super psyched that we have so many CEDIS members here tonight and on the call. So I'd like to give them an opportunity to fill in any blanks that I've left and then also allow for any questions from either the Chamber Board or Council on this.
Does anybody in CEDIS want to chime in what Josh has given an update on? Does anybody have any questions from the Council or the Chamber Board? Jennifer.
Josh, thank you for that update. I'm curious, what are the, you know, tangible next steps for the Project X Factor?
So in the way of Clean, Safe, Welcoming Committee, there's already already been some significant tangible steps that have been taken, particularly around the clean initiative. That Justin might be better to speak specific to that. But there's been groups going out cleaning up trash. There's been communication with various businesses around our efforts. You might see, if you go past the Valley Medical Center Clinic over by the Costco, Valley made a significant investment in cleaning up the area that was between them and I guess what you would call the the Safeway complex, if you will. So.
I did notice that actually this weekend on Friday, I was driving through there and it caught my attention because it was like, what's different?
Yeah, there was there the amount, I happen to drive past there every day on the way to work. And when they first got in there, the amount of visible garbage that was in in that area was pretty obscene. So it's really cool that they took it upon themselves to go ahead and and get after that. So the the safe piece, we've had various discussions with with our city police department. I know that the city itself has really invested in the concept where they've sent, they sent a number of people to the SEPTED training sessions. We have had conversations with businesses ourselves around some of this.
I think your pros on this, Josh.
I think that's the first time I've ever been able to keep Josh quiet for a second.
Oh.
And he's back.
Did I get cut off?
You got cut off.
Well, I don't know where I, so am I still here?
Yes.
I don't know where I got cut off, but.
You were talking about SEPTED training with the police.
Yeah, great. So we have also reached out to some businesses about some simple things they could do. And then, not to steal Kalen's thunder, but there's a discussion around the BNO tax specific to to supplying better coverage of our police force within the the business corps.
Right. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Josh. Sean.
I think you got cut off again, but I'll just state it for everyone. I I like this idea. Since I've been living here in Covington, I I've made the joke about, you know, when I first moved here, people would say, you'd ask where you're from. I said, I'm from Covington. They'd go, where's that? And I'd say it's between Kent and Maple Valley, and they'd say, okay. Well, now they're starting to say, well, that's where the Costco is or the Home Depot. But I do think, yeah, if we can identify what that X factor is that makes Covington unique, I'm all for it. I think the the only suggestion or advice I'd give is if perhaps, and maybe we've done this in the past, is reach out to the community to see what ideas they have on what makes Covington special. I have done some traveling around the world, and a lot of these communities have a little token that is spread throughout their city. So San Francisco's got a bunch of hearts that they spread throughout the city, and they're in different places. And groups get to sponsor those and paint them. I think Alaska Anchorage has a polar bear, and there's just some others like that that I think would be cool if we can find that one symbol that represents Covington. Maybe it's a big C that we put around. I I don't know, but I think that'd be kind of cool. So thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Christina.
Hi, first off, that was amazing. What what great ideas. I wanted to ask, where does arts collaborate with CEDIS at the most forte in in this?
Yeah, so we've had a number of, Merida and I, that's where we started. And we felt like an interesting, vibrant core with different art installations would lead to a natural kind of circular relationship between art, business, business reinventing and re-investing in art and then, of course, reinvesting in their businesses and people then be more interested in shopping and doing business there. So there's a, there is a an item on the agenda around the Business Art Grant that Kalen's going to speak to. So I won't, again, I won't steal his, but he will speak to that.
Thank you. And then, without like littering the city, I, just just an idea. I I once drove, I don't remember where it was exactly, but there were these very inspirational signs that were short, you know, just a few words, kind of like what we would do with our campaign signs, but without littering the city. And it really made an impact. It was it was just something short, like you got this, or today is not yesterday, or tomorrow's a new day, or whatever. But I like Sean's idea, and then if we could elaborate from the C as well and create good adjectives from the letter C, just food for thought, but it was birthed in my brain as you guys were talking about that. So, thank you. It's wonderful.
Cool. Thanks, Christina. Beth.
Yeah, I I I got the juices flowing when you were talking about welcome and most welcoming. And I I think of like Welcome Wagon or the wave, because when people are walking by, you know, you wave to people across the street and hey, how's it going? And, you know, maybe that's kind of tying in with Sean and Christina were talking about. Maybe it's a wave that we we plant throughout the city with a smile or something. I don't know, just seems like it could be fun, but.
Thanks, Beth. Joe, you're live.
Some of our, some of our earliest thoughts on welcoming is to really think about how we can define the city itself. So when people really know when they're coming into Covington from the various entry points. So.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Josh. Before we move on to Kalen with the next update from CEDIS, I just want to say thank you to Justin for starting the Clean, Safe and Welcome Committee. Big improvement. And Justin, it just, there's not enough kudos I can spread around to thank you for getting that and starting the foundation for for getting that going in the city. So thank you for doing that. I guess, so turn it over to Kalen next. Is that right, Josh, or?
Yep, yep. Kalen's going to talk about, there's four items on the agenda. The Business Art Grant and BNO Tax Survey are what he's going to mention and talk about.
Perfect. Thanks, Josh. Bye, Kalen.
All right, perfect. Thank you for having me. And once again, I'd like to second that. Thank you, Justin. Great work for the city. Can't be said enough. And then I'll let you guys know that I'm going to work with a word called brevity, something that is not in Josh's vocabulary. So here we go. So we're looking at some business art grants, working with the Arts Commission on this in regards to how do we generate enthusiasm and interest to keep the business area in Covington, particularly the downtown area, to generate additional business and actually increase the flow of patrons through there as well. So this is more to come, but it's my understanding that we have a few grants to give of anywhere from two to four thousand dollars that will be working with certain individuals. And I don't know the application aspect. Reagan, can you go on that aspect?
Yeah, so it's really preliminary at this point. We had conversations with the Arts Commission about doing it. The follow up with Arts Commission was, because the thought was, they're the one commission that has some dedicated funds from the council. So we could use some of the money from the Public Art Fund line item in the budget. They aren't quite at the point where they're ready to designate that funding for the art grant yet. So it's still kind of preliminary, but like Kalen was saying, our thought was that they'd be between two and four thousand dollar grants.
And then the second piece that I'm talking on this evening is the BNO Tax Survey. Obviously, this can get, generate some anxiety across business owners. And even we've had some interesting discussions across CEDIS in regards to this. So our thought was to send out an electronic BNO survey and understand the thoughts of the business owners of Covington, but also use that as an opportunity to actually explain what these funds would be used for, particularly in the the crime sector and how it may have the ability to, you know, improve the overall crime aspect within Covington. And I'd open it up to my fellow members to have any comments or anything that I may have missed.
Anybody on CEDIS want to add? Kevin.
I I just wanted to second what Kalen just said about communicating to the business owners the the value. I think sometimes all they see is the 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 tax. They don't see that, you know, it's actually going to something that that creates value for the or that helps. So I think, you know, really that communication piece is key.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else? Anybody from the Chamber Board or have any questions? Mark?
Yes, I would, I would.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree with that completely. We've discussed it in previous chamber meetings, CEDIS meetings. If we, if our community has a different approach maybe than other communities, I've also had similar taxes that might go a long way into communicating the need for the city and go a long way in helping prevent crime and generating greater business and a greater environment for that as well.
Thank you, Ron. Mark.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity just to briefly comment, you know, from a standpoint of the hospital. We're, I think it's a reasonable characterization to say that we're not enthused about a BNO tax as a general construct. That's a radical position, I know. But nonetheless, we would be in support of a tax that has clear objectives around it that goes to what this proposal, as I understand it, does, which is to engage in efforts to keeping and making the community safe. That to us feels like something that's worth paying for, and it will require somebody to pay for it. It's not a free service. It won't happen through magic, and we're willing to pony up, you know, for our share of it. We would probably caveat that with the narrative that we wouldn't see that as an extension that all other BNO tax increases wouldn't be met with vehement opposition if they were to be proposed. But for this, this feels cogent, well articulated, and something that will result in the considerable investment MultiCare has in the hospital, remaining something that is a place that patients feel is a safe campus for them to patronize. We think that has meaningful material value. So we would certainly support this specific iterated purpose of the BNO tax. Martin.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else from the Chamber?
Does Council have any questions for CEDIS on this? Beth.
Yeah, so I do have a question, and this speaks to what you were talking about, Mark, but I'm sure others are feeling that. And we'll be doing a presentation to the Council later this evening on our Council Subcommittee. But one of the things that we'll be talking about are some of the comments that came out of the survey that we had sent out, you know, through collaboration with with CEDIS and Chamber. But the people want specifics, like exactly what would we get for our money scenario? And right now, we're talking in general terms because you don't want to over promise, under deliver. You know, what is going to be capable? But is that, is that enough? Or is it, do you feel like you would need to see, we want so many officers added, we want this, or we want that? Like, does it have to be bulleted to that level in order for it to?
Oh, I I would say, I suppose that there are multiple answers to that. But I, we have a great deal of faith and trust in the government of the city of Covington. It's demonstrated that through multiple different actions over a period of time. So, I mean, I just, it it feels like we could get into some bad micromanagement of things if we were to, I don't profess expert expertise in police services or community. I mean, we all have thoughts, right? But I'm not an expert on it. None of us at MultiCare feel that we are. We have observations about what happens in the community around this. But from our perspective, the the entire support of this is predicated on exactly that, which is confidence that we have and have continued to have had in the government of the city of Covington. So we 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 would back it without needing to know at a very, very granular level exactly what it was used for. I mean, if there seemed to be some, you know, if it turned out that it was all spent on parks, you know, that's going to be an issue, right? But that's not going to happen. And so we, that would, I think, be our perspective is that we have, we have enough substance in the proposal that's already been articulated, which is around public safety. And there's a variety of things that that means. That may mean some new officers, that may mean other programs for youth after school. I mean, there's a whole list of things, but we would leave it to the judgment of the City Council and the City Government to understand where the biggest investment needed to be made and support it without conditions.
Great. Thank you.
Regan.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to add a little bit on to, I believe Josh talked about this. Kalen may have touched on it a little bit. And Jennifer asked about some kind of next steps, tangible things, and a couple of the items that we talked about at just our last CEDIS meeting, I wanted to bring up and and address as well, so Council's aware of those. One of the issues around the Welcome Committee is to create this downtown identity. And Josh talked about that a little bit, and the thought in that was to create that identity. As we kept throwing around ideas and discussing them, it was really event centered as opposed to an object centered. Like, oh, there's this thing there, but it's very much around events. And so like a Where's Karma, art walks, food truck rallies, things like that, that we want to develop that downtown identity around. Another thing we talked about, obviously with Lake Point coming in, it will be a beautiful new commercial development there. And and the one advantage that they may have over our downtown core is it will be managed by one entity, and that marketing will be by one entity. Where in our downtown core, we have a makeup of a whole bunch of different property owners and business owners. And so we started throwing around the idea of a marketing co-op and helping to facilitate that. So I think Laura may have mentioned this idea. We are are trying to put. We are, are trying to put, um, get addresses and contact information for all the property owners in our downtown core to invite them to a CEDIS meeting, even the ones that live out of state and propose these ideas and ask their, their thoughts and opinions on how can we collectively come together and, and market what we have here in the downtown and make it an experience for people to come to. So those are the two most recent kind of tangible things we've been considering.
Thanks Reagan. Anybody else have any questions or comments? When you stated that Reagan, is that the Business Owner or Manager Summit in September that you were talking about?
So that's separate. I think Kalen or Josh, one of those was going to mention that. Do you want, if you want to?
I'm going to hand it back over to Josh.
Okay.
Great, yeah, so it's, it's separate in that we, the manager meeting really has two, where there's really two efforts there to, to continue to build on the community, the business community and really introduce ourselves as a competent group of people that are helping to steer the city towards, I guess, towards greatness. That probably makes a lot of sense right now to say. And so this is really to get everyone's buy-in to this concept of clean, safe, welcome. There are businesses in Covington that we want to coerce into cooperating with us on this, that, that just, we feel are in some ways, I guess, to put it bluntly, letting the city down in the way they present their, their business and their property, for example. And we feel like if we present a coherent, competent plan around what our ideas are, that perhaps we'll get some buy-in to these groups investing in the way they're presenting themselves. So that's what that meeting is for. What, what Reagan was referring to is, is around really bringing in, like they, like he said, there are people that own property in Covington that aren't even in state. And how do we get them involved in understanding what we're doing and even get them to invest in what he was referring to as a co-op? Some people might call that a downtown association in, in other communities, that type of thing. So that's, that's what he's, what Reagan's referring to.
Thank you, Josh. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on what's been brought up so far?
Yes, Reagan brought up an excellent point. And we discussed this in several venues. Having now done co-op allows us to have engagement, buy-in and mix it from business leaders, but makes it more organic. So it's led by them and, and they can, I would say bring some services. So it gives us a voice, a way to talk to each other. And that's not something that we're currently doing or that we've done in different ways, but this is a little bit more organic and it allows a lot of spontaneity, you know, in goods, services and the way that people talk to each other. And I think Laura was the one that maybe suggested that and it was an excellent suggestion. And I think there's a lot of business leaders that were interested in knowing what other people are doing and being a part of the city and a part of an overall strategy, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you Reagan.
Jennifer?
Just wanted to make a comment that this sounds amazing and I can't wait to hear an update after this meeting because, you know, I see as, as a resident, I see the difference in, in the properties and I know that we all do. And, you know, especially with, with all of this talk, you know, the, our recent hire that's going around and cleaning up the city. There's only so much that the city can do, that private businesses can do. And then here I am, you know, driving through a roundabout and I see so much, so much garbage on the right, but not the left. And, and not just the trash. I mean, so many things, you know, you guys really explained it well. And so I'm really curious to hear what some of the property owners have to say. If, if they want to get involved, are there obstacles? Did they not know? I, I'm just, I'm really interested in, in what you all find out about this. This is a really great idea.
Well, that would certainly be something that anybody from the council, if they wanted to attend, they would certainly be invited to. So we'll make sure that everyone's aware of, of when that's taking place.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd definitely be interested in that. Beth?
Yeah, sorry, I can't, I can't, I'm getting so excited just hearing about all of these wonderful ideas and the collaboration and the direction that, that we're going in. And sometimes it just takes that spark to, and getting everybody, trying to get that buy-in, getting everybody on the same page. Covington isn't just an investment for people. It is a home. It is a community. It is a place. And they will share in those benefits if they give that investment. I think that's, you know, we, we see that time and time again. And I'm really excited and thank you for all the work y'all are doing.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, I'll turn it back over to you, Josh or Kalen. What's, what's next?
I think we've covered the agenda at this point. I'll just point out that really what, everything we've been talking about tonight is an extension of something that CEDIS, you know, really started almost eight, nine years ago in the form of the, the branding initiative. It's where the new logo came from. It's where the growing towards greatness came from. And, you know, I think we're continuing to do the work of defining what that means and helping people to understand when, when they do see the, the logo that has hidden meaning right now, that they understand why the arrows are pointing up and et cetera, and what growing towards greatness means. And I think we're just starting to define that, which is, I think, an encouraging place to be.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say I am really excited. I mean, I used to be on CEDIS and, but you guys, you, the entire CEDIS group has really taken this to a new level. And I'm really excited about what you're bringing forward, what you're talking about and the energy and synergy that you have. It just, it reminds me of a quote that I saw today and it's, "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress and working together is success." And that's from Henry Ford and you guys are hitting it out of the park. So thank you. I just, I'm really excited. And I, I look forward to sitting in on any of those meetings that I'm allowed to. And I know some I need to stay away from, but that's fine. So I don't want to influence anybody's comments. I like to hear everything I can. So I greatly appreciate it. But does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? I guess with that, thank you again all for being here tonight on your nights off. And I just really, really appreciate everything that you are doing, each of you, serving and helping the community, helping Covington to be better. And Justin, that goes for you too. I know you're out there in the audience and I just greatly appreciate it. It, it makes Covington feel like home. So thank you all and I hope you all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
We can stop the recording and council, we will start again.